And welcome, everyone. I'm Ann Clemente, Chairperson. The regular meeting of the Brunswick Zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, August 17, 2020 is called to order. At this time, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Polito, would you kindly explain the procedure for using the Zoom platform for tonight's meeting?
Yes, I will, Chairman. This is Pat Polito. Under Governor Andrew Cuomo's executive orders have authorized us to hold our regular meetings over the Internet. So to facilitate that things run smoothly and with this little technological, well, little technological issue as possible, we are asking for the following. When not speaking, please mute your audio. When you do speak, please state your name. We have to do a transcript of this meeting, and it's easy for the person doing transcript to know who's talking. So please state your name, and during the public hearing, you will need to state your name and address. You're encouraged to use headphones, and in particular headphones with a microphone, so that there is no feedback loop created. And if there's two or more of yous in the same room watching the meeting on different devices, make sure only in once talking, make sure only one person's audio is on. Otherwise, we get terrible feedback, and it's tough to do the transcripts from there. So that's my thing. Remember, the biggest part is state your name before you start talking. And during the public hearings, you got to state your name and address. Back to you, Chairman Clemente.
Thank you, Mr. Polito. Chairman Clemente, there's a change in the Zoning Board of Appeals membership. Mr. Bill Shover has retired. We thank him for his participation on the zoning board. He added his expertise, experience, patience, and knowledge to the board. We appreciate his service to the residents of Brunswick. We wish him good luck in his future endeavors. Our, the newest member I'm happy to announce is John Manillo. We look forward to John's contributions to the zoning board. Mr. Chuck Golden from the Building Department, would you kindly call roll attendance of the zoning board members?
Hi, this is Chuck from the Building Department. I am going to do the roll call. Chairman Clemente?
Here.
She just gave me the suns up. Member Schmidt?
Yeah.
I saw John here as well.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Member Manillo. And Member Charette?
Present.
Now, that concludes our, our roll call attendance. Back to you, Chairman. Everyone is in attendance.
Chairperson Clemente, thank you, Mr. Golden. The Chair will address the transcripts for the Zoning Board of Appeals meetings of May 27, 2020, and June 15, 2020. We will handle them separately. I want to acknowledge the challenging work of putting these transcripts together, and the board is very grateful for how well done they are. Zoning Board members, for the transcript of the special meeting held May 27, 2020, are there any corrections or comments? And this is in particular for Members Schmidt and Curran.
I don't have any changes.
This is-
Member Schmidt, I don't have any change.
This is Member Curran, I don't have any comments.
Thank you. The Chair offers the motion to approve the transcript of the Bronx, the Brunswick Zoning Board of Appeals, special meeting held on May 27, 2020. Will a member second?
This is Member Curran, I'll second.
Thank you, Member Curran. Well, Mr. Gilchrist, is Attorney Gilchrist with us? I would kindly ask him to do a roll call vote on the motion to approve the May 27, 2020 minutes.
Yes, thank you. Attorney Gilchrist, on the motion to approve the May 27 transcript, Member Curran?
This is Member Curran, I approve.
Member Schmidt, I can see you. If you do a thumbs up, we'll note that as a, okay, thumbs up, which is a positive vote. Chairperson Clemente?
Aye.
And we'll note that new members, Manillo and Charette, should abstain from the vote because they were not members at that time.
Thank you. For the transcript of the Brunswick Zoning Board of Appeals' regular meeting held on June 15, 2020, are there any, again, to Members Schmidt and Curran, are there any corrections or comments?
This is Member Curran, I have no comments.
The Chair offers the motion to approve the transcript of the Brunswick Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on June 15, 2020. Will a member second?
This is Member Curran, I'll second.
Thank you, Member Curran. Again, Mr. Gilchrist, would you kindly call a roll call vote on the motion to approve the June 15 minutes?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist, on the motion to approve the June 15 meeting transcript, Member Curran?
Member Curran approves.
We'll note thumbs up, which is an affirmative vote. Chairperson Clemente?
Aye, approve.
And I believe Member Charette had not been a member at that meeting. Is that correct?
I believe it was July that Member Charette came on, joined.
Right, so we'll note for the record that Members Charette and Member Manillo were not members for the June 15 regular meeting. The motion nonetheless is carried 3-0.
Thank you, Attorney Gilchrist. Now, let's review the agenda as posted on the town There are four public hearings, 6 Genesee Street, 136 Mountain View Avenue, 116 Woodlawn Court, 18 Cole Hammer Avenue. For everyone's information, 793 Polling Ave. is off the agenda for tonight. The application is delayed until the zoning board's meeting in September, September 21, 2020. The applicant continues to address engineering work and responding to the comments made during the public hearing on June 15, 2020. Also on tonight's agenda, at 7:00 PM, the Planning Board has scheduled a special meeting. It will be a joint meeting with the Zoning Board of Appeals, only on the Blue Sky Towers Selco Horizon application. After that, the zoning board will address new business. The first item of business on the agenda is 6 Genesee Street, Mr. John Zwack, public hearing for two area variances. We will open the public hearing on this application. Mr. Gilchrist, would you kindly read the public notice?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals at 6:00 PM on Monday, August 17, 2020, concerning the application for area variance submitted by John Zwack for property located at 6 Genesee Street. Applicant seeks approval to replace an existing detached garage, requiring variances for side and rear setbacks at this location. Pursuant to the governor's executive orders, the Town of Brunswick will be holding the August 17, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting over the Internet, accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the August 17 Remote Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, as well as copies of the area variance application for public inspection, will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing, and this was published in the record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website, and mailed to owners of properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Mr. Zwack, are there any changes or additions to the Mr. Golden from the Building Department, do we know if Mr. Zwack is in attendance tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
Ah, here he is.
Yes, thank you. Can hear you loud and clear. Mr. Zwack, are there any changes or additions to the application materials?
No, Colonel, there are no changes or additions to this. I do apologize. I was having some audio and microphone issues there.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Golden, kind of refresh my memory. Did we request of the applicant drawings of the proposed garage at our last meeting in June?
To the members, it is a prefab, not a prefab building, but a metal structure of the Carolina Carport manufacturing, which we've had quite a few of. It's a, it's a nice building.
Thank you. Mr. Zwack, would you kindly present a brief overview of the project?
Yes, this is John. Not a problem. So the current plan is to demolish a current existing garage, pour a new Alaskan slab, and then install a Carolina carport. The width would increase by four feet into my yard. The length will stay the same, and the footprint would rotate clockwise into the yard. Currently, the garage is at an angle to the property line, which causes the back rear corner to be approximately three quarters of an inch off the property line. So the new structure would be parallel to the property line and the, and the current home of just under three feet.
Thank you. The zoning board will open the floor for receipt of public comment. Anyone would like to speak for this application? Mr. Golden, are there any written comments on this application that could be read by the board into the record?
This is Chuck from the Building Department. We received no comments in the Building Department on this request.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the zoning board members?
I had a question. I looked at the garage, and to me, it looked like it was in pretty good shape. And I was wondering what he meant when he said it was in bad shape. Is it bad inside, or what?
Mr. Zwack, could you answer that?
Yeah, not a problem. This is John again. So currently, there is not a garage floor inside of it. It's a stone with a wood overlay on top of it. There is a carport coming off of the front of the garage, and it is slowly settling into the driveway. So currently, you cannot get a vehicle of any sorts under the carport into the garage. There's a divier wall inside of the garage. It kind of prevents properties for, for what I use. I currently have a pickup dam looking to store in there, as well as doing some of our interior house projects, having a space for that. There's no power hookup in, in the building. And kind of, it's just the, there's two layers of shingles on it, and underneath the first layer, the plywood is starting to deteriorate a little bit. So for, for myself, it'd be more work improving the garage and updating it to allow for, to fit my vehicle. It's easier and more cost-effective to replace it with a steel structure.
Thank you for that. This is Chairperson Clemente. Thank you for that explanation,
This is Chuck from the Building Department, and to, I asked Mr. Zwack the very same question, because as Mr. Schmidt said, you look at it from the outside, you just look at settling and such, and it didn't look like that bad of a building. But the, as Mr. Zwack said, it just doesn't suit his needs. And to be able to have it suit his needs, the time and money expended on it, it just wasn't going to be worth it.
Yeah, thanks for that explanation, too, Mr. Golden. Are there any other questions by the zoning board members?
This is Member Curran, I have no questions.
So hearing no public comment, the Chair offers a motion to close the public hearing. Would a member second?
For Schmidt, I'll second it.
Thank you, Member Schmidt. We'll do a roll call voting to close the public hearing. Member Schmidt?
Member Schmidt, aye.
Thank you. Member Curran?
Member Curran, aye.
Thank you. Member Charette?
Aye.
Thank you. Member Manillo?
Member Manillo, aye.
Thank you. Ann Chair Clemente, aye as well. Public hearing is closed. Zoning Board members are prepared to deliberate and act on the application. As a residential application seeking two area variances, it's a type 2 action under the State Environmental Review Act. No further seeker determination is required. Zoning Board members will review the factors, the five factors for consideration of an area variance. For the benefit of everyone, the discussion of the factors creates a record for the basis of a decision by the zoning board. We'll go to our first factor. How no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood nor a detriment to nearby properties created by granting the area variance. What the board must do is to consider whether dimensional alteration being proposed will result in a structure or configuration that will be seriously out of place in the neighborhood.
This is Member Curran. I did a site visit, and I do not see where this would be a detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, it will, I think, add to, to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Member Curran. This is Chairperson Clemente. I would agree with that assessment. The applicant has done a fine job renovating the front of the house, the new siding, the roofline, the front porch. Looks very well done, very attractive. And I agree with you. I think a replacement of the dilapidated garage would be an improvement and not create an undesirable change to that particular neighborhood. Next, we're asked to explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. We're looking to see if the applicant has explored the possibility of another option. And Mr. Zwack was saying the option of repairing the existing garage, and spoke to that as was questioned by Member Schmidt.
Member Schmidt, in terms of placement of the building, it is, the building is right now is at the end of the driveway, and that's really the only logical place to build a new garage is right at the end of the driveway.
Chairperson Clemente, thank you, Member Schmidt. I would agree with that as well. And the applicant is trying to adjust the new proposed garage on a new slab, and how he can correct the way that it overhangs onto his neighbor's property. Okay, next, we're asked to describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. And the board should make a reasoned judgment as to whether the nonconformity being proposed is too great, as compared to the lawful dimensions allowed by the zoning board, the zoning law. Let's see, the requested setback value seems substantial. Left side backs 10 feet is required, and 2.66 is proposed, and the rear setback 20 feet is required, and 10.4 is proposed. However, the proposed garage kind of fits into that spot well. There's a fence on the left side property, and on the right side, there's an enclosed fence around the entire For our fourth factor, we're asked to explain how the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. For this, the board should weigh the proposal's potential impact on such factors as traffic circulation, drainage, dust, noise, odor, and impact on emergency services, among others.
This is Member Schmidt. Because it's replacing an existing building, there really won't be any change to speak of.
Chairperson Clemente, thank you, Member Schmidt. And lastly, we're asked to explain whether the difficulty is self-created. And noting that even if present, it constitutes only one factor to be considered by the board if it does not in and of itself act as a bar to the grant of the area variances.
This is Member Curran. I would, I mean, it is self-created because he wants to replace the garage, but it's not, it's not negative that he, that that's what he wants to do. I think it'll just add to the neighborhood.
Yeah. Chairperson Clemente, thank you, Member Curran. Any other further deliberations? After considering the balance between the benefit to the applicant as weighed against any detriment to the community at large and the neighborhood in particular, would a member make a motion to grant, grant with conditions, or deny the requested variances?
This is Member Schmidt. I'll make a motion to grant the variances.
Thank you. Motion second?
This is Member-
Member-
Second.
Okay. So I heard Member Curran seconds. Thank you, Member Curran. All in favor, we do a roll call vote. Member Schmidt?
Aye. Member Schmidt, aye.
Thank you, Member Curran.
Member Curran, aye.
Thank you, Member Charette.
Member Charette, aye.
Thank you. Member Manillo?
Member Manillo, aye.
Thank you. Chairperson Clemente, aye. Granted the, the two area variances for the, the side and the rear setbacks. Mr. Zwack, please continue to coordinate with the Building Department on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for helping everyone. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night. Good luck. All right. Second item of business on the agenda, 136 Mountain View Avenue. Seeking an area variance. We will open the public hearing on the application. Mr. Gilchrist, will you kindly read the public hearing notice?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals at 6:15 PM on Monday, August 17, 2020, concerning the application for area variance submitted by Marilyn Bauer for property located at 136 Mountain View Avenue. Applicant seeks approval to add a deck onto an existing nonconforming house at this location, requiring front yard setback variances from Mountain View Avenue and Sanford Road, as well as a side yard setback variance. Pursuant to the governor's executive orders, the Town of Brunswick will be holding the August 17, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting over the Internet, accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the August 17 Remote Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, as well as copies of the area variance application for public inspection, will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing. This was published in the Troy Record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website, and mailed to owners of all properties within 300 feet of the project site.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Marilyn Bauer, are there any changes or additions to the application materials?
No, no. This is Marilyn Bauer. The answer's no.
Ms. Bauer, could you kindly present a brief overview of the project?
We want to add a deck in the backyard. I don't really know what to say. This is my first time.
We're glad that you're here tonight. Perhaps as questions come up, they could be addressed by you. But so far, you're doing a great job. Thank you. The zoning board will open the floor for receipt of public comment. If anyone would like to speak for the application or against, you're welcome to do so now.
Hi. I'm new at this, too. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I live on Sanford Avenue, not Sanford Road, so your information is inaccurate, for starters. And I'm a little confused, because that's not the person that actually lives at that house.
This is Pat Polito, the moderator. Whoever was speaking there, please state your name and address for the record.
Deirdre Wexler, 2 Sanford Avenue, Troy, New York.
And your question is whether, whether or not you, that it was appropriate for you to receive the notice? Is that your question?
Well, I just, I'm confused with the person that's actually speaking on behalf of the property, where I have to listen to all the noise and building over there. And as I said, your paperwork is inaccurate. That's Sanford Avenue. So maybe there's some clarification that needs to be done there?
Mr. Golden from the Building Department, could you help us provide some clarification on the name of the roads where this property is located? I see that the board members in the application have been presented with a diagram, and on it is Mountain View Avenue and Sanford Road. This was received by the Building Department, June 1, 2020.
Hi, this is Chuck from the Building Department. I noticed on the survey in which a gentleman, the surveyor put down, he also has Sanford Road on that. It is known as Sanford Avenue. Gene Avenue and Sanford Avenue. We do not have a Sanford Road in the town. That was a, evidently, the surveyor did not do his research on the name of that road.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Mr. Gilchrist, does that present any problem with the notice of public hearing?
Attorney Gilchrist, I think the more important question is the inquiry about the either resident or owner of the property. I'll note the application listed Marilyn Bauer as both resident and owner, applicant and owner. And Mr. Golden can- And Mr. Golden, can, do we have any confirmation of that? Because now there's a public comment been raised that questions that.
This is Chuck from the Building Department. Ms. Bauer, Marilyn Bauer does not reside there. A gentleman named, I believe his first name is Todd, and Marilyn will be able to correct me if I'm wrong, Todd Bauer, in relation to Marilyn Bauer, yes, actually the resident at the house. We did have a letter from Ms. Bauer early on in this allowing Todd to act as the applicant for the building permit.
Okay, Attorney Gilchrist here. So we've got a situation where the property owner has been properly named in the application. The question remains whether the notice indicating Sanford Road as opposed to Sanford Avenue raises a legal issue on the propriety of the notice. It did indicate setbacks from Mountain View Avenue and Sanford Road. We know that that's not accurate. There's been a public comment raised regarding that. And a strict reading would suggest that the hearing should be re-noticed and identify the location correctly at the intersection of Mountain View Avenue and Sanford Avenue.
So if I heard you correctly, this is Chairperson Clemente looking for clarification that because in the notice it was not correctly, the two roads requesting the setbacks from, it's not properly identified, that this would have to be re-noticed and taken up at the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals in September?
Attorney Gilchrist, I do think a conservative approach on the notice would warrant that conclusion. We do not want, as a zoning board, have any issue concerning notice to the public as to the location. While the application materials, I think, can be read to clearly identify the location, the actual notice of public hearing incorrectly identified the street. And I do think that the application should be re-noticed.
And just, this is Chairperson Clemente, just to extend that clarification, it should be re-noticed for the next meeting held in September?
Attorney Gilchrist, that would certainly be my recommendation, but clearly up to the zoning board members.
So zoning board members, here we, in the midst of a public hearing, and the issue has been brought up about the discrepancy in the notice and the actual roads that this property sits along. Does any member have a comment on how we should proceed?
This is Member Curran. I agree with Attorney Gilchrist that we err on the side of caution and just re-notice it.
First, Schmidt, I agree with that. And I wonder, do we need a motion or can we just, just do it?
This is Attorney Gilchrist. The, the public hearing was opened and a comment received that the notice had a deficiency. I think there should be a motion to indicate that the, the public hearing notice was deficient and that a new public hearing with the correct street names be published and a new public hearing opened at your September meeting. And that should be done by motion. One thing for the board to also consider is whether you would like an updated application and survey map showing the correct street names, so there's no confusion when people look at the, look at the documents. They, Mr. Golden has confirmed that the, the street name is incorrect on, on the survey map.
Member Manillo, I have a question.
Certainly.
Andrew, are we okay with the question about the ownership and the application name?
Attorney Gilchrist, yes, because the application does name the applicant and name the, the real property owner, and both of those are Marilyn Bauer. The fact that she doesn't reside, but has another member of her family reside at the property is not relevant. So the application appears to be filled out correctly. We just need the correct street identifiers.
Okay. I just didn't want that to be raised next month and have to push it back another month forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Manillo. Just one point to say where we would not have to re-notice this is that the list of residents that were noticed, that's correct. So 300 feet from the proposed, proposed project, that seems correct. Their addresses on Sanford Avenue, on Mountain View Avenue. But given that, I understand how we need to be correct in, in the notice. So this is Member Clemente, and I would make a motion to say that the public hearing notice is deficient. The roads need to be corrected. New public hearing needs to be set for the next meeting in September. I'll request some help with this motion from the members in regards to whether or not the Zoning Board of Appeals request a new survey from the applicant with the corrected road signs on it.
This is Member Sherrett. I would say that if we're putting the meeting off till next month due to the error in the public hearing, that perhaps the map should be updated to say the right road.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I'll add that to the motion then. That the public hearing notice be re-noticed, the correct road names be included, that a new survey become part of the application with the corrected names of the roads, and that a new public hearing takes at the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals in September. May I have a second?
I second. This is Member Sherrett. I second that.
Thank you, Member Sherrett. Do a roll call vote for voting. Member Schmidt?
Schmidt, aye.
Member Curran?
Member Curran, aye.
Member Sherrett?
Member Sherrett, aye.
Member Manillo?
Member Manillo, aye.
Chairperson Clemente, aye.
Attorney Gilchrist here. And if we could just note for the record, Chairperson Clemente, the public hearing will be noticed for the September meeting. Is that at 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM on the 21st.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone involved.
This is Ms. Wexler again. Is there a problem if I still have a third question on that issue?
So at the next time that we meet in September, you'll have the opportunity to bring that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, it's 116 Woodlawn Court. Seeking two area variances, we will open the public hearing on this application. Mr. Gilchrist, would you kindly read the public hearing notice?
Attorney Gilchrist, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals at 6:30 PM on Monday, August 17, 2020, concerning the application for area variance submitted by Julie Choffey for property located at 16 Woodlawn Court. Applicant seeks approval to construct a storage shed on property at this location, requiring side and rear yard setback variances. Pursuant to the governor's executive orders, the Town of Brunswick will be holding the August 17, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting over the Internet, accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the August 17 Remote Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, as well as copies of the area variance application for public inspection, will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing. This was published in the Record, placed on the town's signboard, posted on the town website, and mailed to owners of all properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Julia Choffey, are there any changes or additions to the application materials?
This is Julie Choffey. Can you hear me? Mike?
Yes.
Okay. This is Julie Choffey, 116 Woodlawn Court. There are no changes to the original application.
Thank you. Julia Choffey, would you kindly present a brief overview of the project?
Sure. I'm looking to put a 10 by 12 storage shed in the back left rear corner of my, of the fully enclosed fenced-in backyard to put pool supplies and lawn supplies, as I do not have a garage on the property.
Okay, thank you. The zoning board will open the floor for receipt of public comment. If anyone would like to speak for this application or against, you're welcome to do so. Are there any written comments on this application that could be read by the board into the record?
This is Chuck from the Building Department. There were no comments received.
Thank you. Are there any questions from zoning board members?
This is Member Curran. I have no questions.
Is there any reason the shed couldn't be moved a little bit further from the sideline? I understand it can't come forward much more, but is there any reason it couldn't move a little bit closer to the pool? So it's not, not quite such a large variance from the side?
Um, no, there's not really a reason other than it would look a lot nicer aesthetically pleasing to the eye to have it more tucked into the corner.
This is Chuck from the Building Department. And in that, that there is a six-foot privacy fence all the way around the property, the aesthetic value was only gonna, you know, is, you know, of the person that's going to see it, i.e. the owner. And I, I, if, you know, if there were no zoning, I would take that thing and push it right up against the corner because the six foot on either end of it, it just, it's tough to mow and I end up piling things back there and then you hit pipe with the mower and it's just a mess. If it was up to me, I'd push it right back into the corner, but a six foot, I think in this regard is not a, you know, that great of it, of a variance request because, like I say, it's, it's fully enclosed. I mean, you can't even see it. You'll be able to see the roof of the shed.
Right. This is Julie Choffey, property owner, 116 Woodlawn Court. I've also got two dogs that would like to run around there. I would like it closer to the fence, but as Mr. Golden said, for mowing and for the dogs to run around it, you know, six feet is a decent space.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation and thank you for the, the description, Mr. Golden. You sound like you speak with experience. A hearing, no public comment. The chair offers a motion to close the public hearing. Would a member second?
This is Member Sherrett. I'll second.
Thank you, Member Sherrett. Do a roll call voting. This is to close the public hearing. Member Schmidt? Member Curran?
Member Curran, aye.
Thank you. Member Sherrett?
Member Sherrett, aye.
Thank you. Member Manillo?
Member Manillo, aye.
Thank you. And Chair Clemente, aye. The public hearing is closed. Zoning board members are prepared to deliberate and act on the application. As a residential application seeking area variances, it's a type 2 action under the State Environmental Review Act, so no further secret determination is required. Zoning board members will review the factors for consideration of an area variance. Will look to explain how no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood nor a detriment to nearby properties created by granting the area variances. By saying sheds to contain outdoor and pool equipment are in place at other properties in this applicant's neighborhood. And it's also proposed, as Chuckold and said, to be placed within a fully fenced backyard. And now we're also to ask, explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances. And I guess I go on to talk about what the applicant has already explained, that the applicant has explored placing the proposed shed within the setbacks. However, that would position the shed in the middle of the backyard where a pool for the owner's enjoyment and health is to be placed. We're asked to describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. Just to restate, the requested variances, a side yard of eight feet and a rear yard setback of 18 are relatively substantial, however, as stated before, the proposed shed is to go within a fully fenced backyard. And we're asked to explain how the area variances will not have an adverse effect on the physical, environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And the project is the installation of a pre-made shed. There will not be any increase in noise, dust, water drain, drainage from the project. We're asked to explain whether the difficulty is self-created. And knowing that the consideration is relevant, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variances. It certainly is. I guess for, you know, the reasons stated by, by the homeowner. So after considering the balance between the benefit to the applicant is weighed against any detriment to the community at large and the neighborhood in particular, would a member make a motion to grant, grant with conditions or deny the requested variances?
This is Member Curran. I make a motion that we grant the area variances.
Thank you. Member second?
This is Member Sherrett. I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Sherrett. All in favor, roll call vote. Member Schmidt? Thumbs up, Member Schmidt? All right, we'll, we'll come back. Member Curran?
Member Curran, aye.
Thank you. Member Sherrett?
Member Sherrett, aye.
Member Manillo?
Member Manillo, aye.
Thanks. And Chair Clemente, aye. I think without Member Schmidt's vote.
Hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Area variances request is granted for the side and rear yard setback. Julia Choffey, please continue to coordinate with the building department on this project. We wish you the best of luck.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you, Chuck, for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The fourth and final public hearing for tonight is at 18 Cole Hammer Avenue. Mark Carley seeking front and side setback variances. The board will open the public hearing on this application. Mr. Gilchrist, would you kindly read the public hearing notice?
Attorney Gilchrist, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals at 6:45 PM on Monday, August 17, 2020, concerning the application for area variance submitted by Mark Carley for property located at 18 Cole Hammer Avenue. Applicant seeks approval to construct a storage shed on property at this location, requiring front and side setback variances pursuant to the Governor's executive orders. The Town of Brunswick will be holding the August 17, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting over the Internet accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the August 17 remote zoning board of appeals meeting as well as copies of the area variance application for public inspection will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing. This was published in the record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website, and mailed to owners of properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Mr. Carley, are there any changes or additions to the application materials?
This is Mark Carley, 18 Cole Hammer. No, there's been no changes.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Carley, would you kindly present a brief overview of the project?
Certainly, this is Mark Carley, 18 Cole Hammer Avenue. Would like to have a pre-made, pre-built 10 by 12 shed installed on the side of my house. It'll be used for lawn equipment and, you know, bicycles for the kids, things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Carley. The zoning board will open the floor for receipt of comments. Anyone would like to speak for the application or against? Are there any written comments on this application that could be read by the board into the record, Mr. Golden?
This is Chuck from the building department. There have been no, anything, yeah, we have had nothing received in the building department for this application.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Are there any questions from the zoning board members?
This is member Schmidt. Again, I have a question about the location of the shed. Is there any reason it couldn't be placed behind the house so it wouldn't need the side variance?
This is Mark Carley, 18 Cole Hammer. The backyard, there was difficulty finding the right spot for this shed. There's trees all along the backside. It is on a slight, certain areas, there's like to, back to the left, there's a more inclined and the back is all inclined near the trees. So I'd have to cut a tree down to put it along the backside. To the far right corner, there's extreme, every year, water comes through the, the back line and then the side right line, water from all over neighborhood comes down there and, and it's all constant, it's slowly deteriorating. So I fear putting something that I hope to be here for 20 years on any of those areas. So the left side of the house was our preferred location.
Thank you. This is member Karen. I had the same question because the two lots that are directly behind your house, I mean, they both have sheds located along that fence line. And I, I had that same question about possibly putting it in a different spot along the backside of your property.
This is Mark Carley, 18 Cole Hammer. Again, our, our, on our side of the fence line, we have five big pine trees. I'd have to cut one out to put one in the same area that they do. And so if I went to the left or right of any of those trees, I deal with one in incline on the left side, and then I'm still probably dealing with the same side variance on either of those corners because I'd just be in that side again. So anywhere in that area is a tree which, which kind of blocks me from doing it. Also, I spoke with all the neighbors involved and they all gave me the thumbs up and they had no concern that it's close to their property. So that's another reason I submit my application for this.
I'm not sure if that was caught, but thank you for that explanation, Mr. Carley. Are there any other questions from zoning board members? Hearing no public comment. The chair offers a motion to close the public hearing. Would a member second?
For Schmidt, I'll second.
Thank you, member Schmidt. Roll call vote to close the public hearing. Member Schmidt?
Member Schmidt, aye.
Member Karen?
Member Karen, aye.
Member Sherret?
Member Sherret, aye.
Member Manila?
Member Manillo, aye.
Member, Chair Clemente, aye. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Zoning board members are prepared to deliberate and act on the application. As a residential application seeking area variances, it's a type two action under the state environmental quality review act. No further seeker determination is required. Zoning board members will review the five factors for consideration of an area variance. I asked to explain how no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties created by granting the area variances. Say a shed to store outdoor equipment is consistent within this R15 zoning district. Other properties in the neighborhood have this type of shed. They were asked to explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances. And we'll note that questions from the zoning board members were to this point and the applicant did describe removal of trees, drainage issues, and the topography of the backyard as why this particular site was chosen. And I guess also to add to that, on the other side of the house is the applicant's driveway. They were asked to describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. The two variances, the side setback of five feet where 15 is required and the front setback is 44 feet where 60 feet is required. As the applicant wrote in his application, they are substantial related, relative to the lots. They were asked to explain how the proposed area variances will not have an adverse effect on fiscal or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. I would just add that the shed's being built offsite. Will not be any construction done at the residence. No extra noise, dust, or runoff. And lastly, we're asked to explain whether the difficulty is self-created.
Member Schmidt, I would say yes, it is self-created because the shed could be moved in a less desirable spot, but I don't think it's an important factor.
Thank you, member Schmidt. Chairperson Clemente, after bouncing, oh, pardon me, Chairperson Clemente, ask if there are any further deliberations? After considering the balance between the benefit to the applicant is weighed as any detriment to the community at large and the neighborhood in particular, would a member make a motion to grant, grant with conditions, or deny the requested area variances?
As member Schmidt, I'll make a motion to grant the variances.
Thank you, member Schmidt. Member second?
This is member Karen, I second.
Thank you, member Karen. Roll call vote. Member Schmidt?
Aye.
Member Karen?
Member Karen, aye.
Member Sherret?
Member Sherret, aye.
Member Manila?
Member Manillo, aye.
Chairperson Clemente, aye. So hinted the two area variances for the front and side setbacks. Mr. Carley, please continue to coordinate with the building department on this project. We wish you the best of luck. Have a good night.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the joint meeting of the zoning board of appeals with the planning board on the Verizon application. The joint meeting is opened by the zoning board of appeals and the planning board with respect to their respective pending permit applications. Notice of special meeting will be read into the record. Mr. Gilchrist, would you kindly read the notice?
I would. Chairperson Clemente, but you'll have to bear with me for a minute as I do not have that in front of me.
And just for now, I believe that Mr. Ron LaBerge is in attendance as the consulting engineer for the two boards. Is that correct, Mr. LaBerge?
That is correct. Good evening.
Thank you for joining us. Just to clarify, are we waiting for Attorney Gilchrist to return to read the special meeting notice? Or did he ask me to read it? I, my computer blanked out.
This is Pat Polito, the moderator. I think Andy did one get it. I was pulling up something else for Dave Brennan, so I did not have it up when he took off.
All right, thank you.
Attorney Gilchrist here. I apologize for that. And now I see it up on the screen. Thank you, Mr. Polito. Has this been read yet?
No, it has not. Sorry.
Okay, Attorney Gilchrist, notice of special meeting. Notice is hereby given that a special meeting will be held by the planning board of the Town of Brunswick on Monday, August 17, 2020. The planning board will participate in a joint meeting with the Brunswick zoning board of appeals regarding the application of Blue Sky Towers III Selco Verizon for a wireless telecommunications facility located off Creek Road. The planning board will join the zoning board of appeals meeting at 7:00 PM for such a purpose. Pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, the Town of Brunswick will be holding the August 17 zoning board of appeals meeting, which the planning board will join, over the Internet accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the August 17 remote zoning board of appeals regular meeting and the planning board's special meeting will be available on the Town of Brunswick website on the day of the meeting. This was sent to the record for publication. It was published, or strike that, it was placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website. And it's my understanding that we have a quorum of the planning board logged on to the meeting. And this does constitute a, an official special meeting for the planning board to participate jointly with the zoning board in discussion concerning this application.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. The boards will request the applicant to make a presentation concerning the proposed project. Mr. Brennan, thank you for joining us tonight. Would you like to present to the boards your information?
Yes, good evening. Dave Brennan, speaking for the applicant. Can you hear me okay? Very good. Thank you.
This is, uh, this is Chairman Oster. Can I just ask Andy, should we officially come on to our meeting at this point?
I think, Attorney Gilchrist here, Chairman Oster, I think that is a fair point. I neglected to do that for the record. We should do, Mr. Golden, if you could, a roll call vote for the members of the planning board that are in attendance at the meeting. This is Attorney Gilchrist. Not hearing, Mr. Golden. I'll do the roll call vote for the planning board members. Chairman Oster?
Here. Chairman Oster here, I'm sorry.
Yep. Member Krieger?
Member Krieger here.
Member Manillo? It would appear, member Kevin Manillo, absent. Member Peterson?
Member Manillo's here, Andy.
We'll correct the record. Member Kevin Manillo, planning board is present. Member Peterson? Member Peterson not responding. We'll note his absence. Member Henderson? Likewise, no response. We'll note member Henderson absent. Member Stancliff?
Member Stancliff here.
Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox here.
All right, there is a quorum of the planning board constituting, again, a noticed special meeting to be held jointly with the zoning board.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. At this time, Mr. Brennan, would you like to kindly share your information to the boards?
Dave Brennan, speaking on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Towers, Verizon Wireless, and AT&amp;T. And before I dive right into the presentation, first, thank you everyone for getting together for the special meeting. But to, to take two steps backwards, the, the reason I think we're here this evening, and certainly Mr. Gilchrist or others can, can hop in and interject as necessary, is at the, the last meeting of the planning board, we were going through my presentation and talking about the alternative locations that have been under consideration in this matter. And there was a, I believe, a consensus that drove this request for a special meeting, which was, the, the boards didn't want to be, I guess, stepping on each other's toes, I think was the term that I recall being used with, with one board having one opinion and one board having possibly a different opinion of the applications. And that, and so there was a, a thought that it was, would be good to have everyone in, in one location, hear the same presentation. And so there was a thought that it would be good to have everyone in one location, hear the same presentation and discuss it amongst yourselves. And in particular, the reason is, on the screen in front of you right now, is the proposal that has the location of the original application, where the gray square in the middle, and I think I had, Mr. Puleto, I had to give up control of the screen so I could turn my video on, so I can't control it right now. But that square in the middle is the lease area, and that's the lease area that was proposed for a, thank you, for a, so I've got my cursor on it. Here, can you see that? Ms. Clemente?
I don't see your cursor moving. There, now I do, thank you.
Okay. Dave Brennan again speaking, thank you. So this was the area of the initial application. This was the location for a 150-foot tower. And by way of background, the application has always contemplated and was publicly noticed with the balloon flies for two alternative locations. One, I'll call it roughly down in this area of my cursor, that would require a tower of 240 feet. And another one in this tree row here, that would require a tower of 80 feet. And the reason was to show a couple of different alternatives, but the original reason was back before the town amended their zoning, your zoning law in 2017 or 18, I forget which year it was, there used to be a zoning district that bisected this property right about here. And on this side of it, up the top of the hill, towers were allowed under the zoning law at the time. And on this side, towers weren't allowed and required to use variance. So at the time of the initial application, we'd always disclosed two alternatives because one needed a use variance and one didn't. When the town updated their zoning, now towers are not allowed in any of these districts, and in particular, not in the agricultural overlay zone. So I would say, roughly speaking, the majority of the eastern part of the town requires a use variance now. But that being said, also, the topography is always driven at the low end towards Crick Ave, needing more height to maintain the antennas going up the hill 150 and towards the top of the hill 80 feet. And as a result of that, we've also, we were requested by the boards at various times to provide photo simulations of the different alternatives, and we did provide photo simulations in the tower at the top. And there was also another location in this vicinity that would have been 90 feet because of the low height and the existing tree lines were simmed as a stealth monopine tree. And so, further complicating this discussion is the initial area, the gray square 100 by 100 that requires 150 feet is, meets the setback requirement of 750 feet from a residence. Anything going up into this area requires also another variance because it's within 750 feet of a residence. But you can't build 150-foot stealth monopine tree and maintain that distance. And so with a variety of competing interests that go into this, the thought was to have a discussion amongst the board of the various pros and cons of the application and the locations, and see if the next step from the planning board's perspective, or what we started talking about at the last meeting, was they need to go on to a seeker determination, and that seeker determination, interestingly, is it's a bit of a ping pong game. The planning board is lead agency, they have to make a determination under seeker. And that seeker process needs to be done before the zoning board can correspondingly act on any variances. And then after the zoning board acts on variances, then it goes back to the planning board for site plan. So we've got many different aspects of zoning and land use covered in this one. So what I'm going to do is just scroll through the slides that I prepared, just to bring everybody up to speed and do it efficiently here. Please stop me if you want to dwell on any particular slide, and then I will turn it back over. So this is just the original site plan showing the road basically hugging the tree line and the field line, excuse me, and coming to the middle of the field for the lease area at 150 feet. We also, I'm trying to see if I can enlarge this. This is the same version showing the road coming up the side. These were the three alternative locations for the towers. This was lower towards Crick Road was 240 feet. The central spot was 150, and the top location would only require 80 feet due to the change in topography. It keeps the antennas at the above, the same above sea level elevation roughly, and provides the service, but because of topography, we can attach to the ground and keep it a lower tower. This is an aerial photo with numbers one, two, and three. During the process, I believe, and certainly if I misspeak, please correct me, but I believe that there was, no one thought the 240-foot alternative that needs to be painted and have aerial, excuse me, aircraft obstruction lighting was a good idea, so we haven't focused on that in some time. The number three is is the location of the 150-foot tower. One is the location of the 80-foot tower. Excuse me. And two was an alternative we had proposed that would require a 90-foot tower, and we flew a balloon on location two as well to give another alternative. And so with that, I'm going to go through the additional photo simulations that were prepared this summer. This is the, in these views, the orange balloon is flown at 80 feet, and there's a red balloon flown at 90. And I'll just scroll back one second. So the orange balloon is this location one, the red balloon is location two. So this is looking up from Crick Road. You can see the top in here is the orange balloon, and then the next slide will be a simulation. Oh, we did, I'm sorry, we didn't simulate that one. We have provided other simulations previously. This is a view of the red balloon from Crick Road, and what a tree would look like in the distance at that location. This is again, you can see the, this is the orange balloon in the distance. And again, roughly, a simulation would look something like this in the distance. This is turning around the corner and heading, I'll call it roughly west on Menemsha. Again, this is the orange balloon at the tip of the cursor in the distance. And further up Menemsha, the tip of the balloon, so there'd be a little bit of a visibility of the stealth tree above the canopy. Now we're turning the corner on Menemsha and getting onto San Cherry Hill Lane, and neither balloon is visible going up San Cherry Hill Lane. At the end of this set of slides, we do have, I believe it's from the backyard of this house, which is the O'Brien residence. We do have a photo of the balloon from the back of the residence, which I'll show at the end. So none of the balloons are showing up in the distance. This is a photos taken from Coal Hammer. None of the balloons are above the trees from Coal Hammer Ave. And then we're now on Golden Eagle Court. If you can visualize this, Golden Eagle Court basically is a cul-de-sac to the east and comes back and joins Eagle Ridge Drive. And so in this particular location at numbers one and three, neither balloon is visible. This is, this is actually the taller balloon that's further away is shown here. This is the red balloon at 90 feet. And then next is a simulated tree in the view shed. This now, we've turned the corner, we're going up, going basically due south on Eagle Ridge Drive. This would be the second house around the corner. This is the orange balloon at 80 feet. Down here, this where I'm circling is the fence. This is, if we look at an aerial view, there's a pool in this backyard. That's the McDonald residence. They came and spoke at the public hearing in January, and so this would be the balloon in the view shed. And then this is, excuse me, the simulated tree in the background. This is, excuse me, again, this is the McDonald residence, which the pool, if you look in an aerial photo, there's excuse me, there's two more houses up the hill. There's another house to the right of the McDonald house, and then there's the one at the high point on the cul-de-sac. So this is the red balloon at 90 feet in the view shed. And then this is the simulated tree. And as we looked at these photos, I was asked at the planning board meeting, I think by the chairman, but I so by the chairman of, as between these two locations, if I was asked for which of these I think is the better location and why. I will recount to the zoning board that I said it should be the 80-foot tower, which is a bit shorter. It's, as you will see, is less visible, blends better in the existing screening, and also requires less of an access road. So this is the house that is to, the McDonald residence would be to the left side of the screen. The last house up is, you can see their driveway here going up a little bit, is here to the right. This is the red balloon at 90 feet shown directly behind this house in the top of the tree. I'm sure there's, most of my reasoning is I'm sure there's more visibility behind that house. This, this photo is, this is the McDonald residence. This is the orange balloon at 80 feet. And then this is the simulation. And then, again, this is the McDonald, McDonald house. This is the fence around the pool. This is the orange balloon at 80 feet in the simulated tree. This is actually, it looks a little orange, but this is the red balloon. The McDonald house is to the left. This is the second to last house. And then this is the balloon, and then the simulated tree behind, which is tough to simulate with all the growth in it. This is, we're back on San Cherry Hill Lane from the original photos. This green balloon is the 150-foot location. This is viewed from the backyard of the O'Brien residence. This is the 80-foot balloon here in the distance. We had previously supplied a simulation of what the tree would look like, and if you recall, the original set had the trunk going roughly halfway up, so it was a long steel pole up to about here. We were asked to branch it all the way down. So the branching now extends approximately 20 feet from the ground, so it's about 65 feet of branching going down to provide that you don't see the sky through the, just the trunk backlit by the sky. And this is the other side looking back. This is again, the 150-foot balloon. This is the Collins residence off of, in the backyard of 44 Coal Hammer. This is the orange balloon. And then this is the simulation with the branching going all the way down. I just want to go back up. We also had a discussion with the planning board about if there was anything else that could be done to improve this. The proposed location of the 80-foot tower is here. There was a discussion that if we slid it a little bit back into this corner, it would, because there's no visibility from Golden Eagle Court. If we slid it a little bit further into this corner, it would mitigate the view from the Collins backyard even a little bit more and take a little bit of the view that's behind McDonald and these other houses and push it out of the view shed. And so that was one thing we talked about, and I think that probably is a fair stopping point for me as to what we conveyed at the planning board meeting at the, a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you for that recap. At this time, are there any questions from the zoning board members? And then Russ, you want to handle from the planning board members? We can open it up for discussion at this time together, both boards.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Thank you, Ann. Yeah, we have reviewed the presentation that Dave gave at our last meeting. And we, I just want to follow up on the last remark he made about possibly sliding it a little bit further to the one side. I think the general consensus of opinion of the board was that an 80-foot pine tree was more realistic than a 90-foot pine tree or 95-foot pine tree. So I think we're probably leaning towards, at this point, I will open it for discussion, obviously, the number one position there at the 80-foot location.
This is Attorney Gilchrist, and we'll just note for the record, while the board is discussing various options, the board is certainly not predetermining the application at this point. It's simply deliberation on various options and either what it deems to be significant impacts, what it deems to be impacts that are lesser than other proposed options. We'll just confirm for the record that we're at certainly the discussion phase and that these deliberations should not be viewed as predetermining any application in front of either the planning board or the zoning board.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. This is Member Clemente, Chairperson Clemente. For Chairperson Oster, could you kindly describe or go into detail some of the reasons why you found the number one, the 80-foot pole attractive in the sense for having a less impact on the visuals?
This is Chairman Oster speaking. It was that question directed to me. I didn't quite get that.
No, I guess what has come up in the planning board before? Did you have a consensus that the number one, the 80-foot pole is more preferable at this time with less impact?
This is Chairman Oster speaking, and we did discuss the two options. There was discussion about the height of a 90-foot tree or a 95-foot tree at location two versus an 80-foot tree. We did take into consideration some of the surrounding vegetation, which in both cases, I believe, there is a pine stand near those. But we felt, at least, let me express my opinion, and then I'll open it up to anyone else on our planning board to make a comment, that the 80-foot tower would be a reasonable location to consider. The other question I had, and I would like to ask maybe Andy this. If we were to decide to move location one further up that ridge or go to location two, which was a alternative location, this changes the original information that was at the public hearing. Do we have to open up that public hearing again to discuss a option that is other than the original three?
This is Attorney Gilchrist, and we did discuss that issue, and it would be my opinion that what is being proposed are responses to the public comments that were received. There were three. There was one preferred location with two alternatives, and significant public comment was received. And what the applicant's done is respond to the public comments, which also includes this now alternate location two. Be my opinion that that would not, that would not require reopening the public hearing. This is more in the nature of response to public This is more in the nature of response to public comments. So procedurally, I don't think that that would be required. This is really the nature of a planning board deliberation and zoning board deliberation. I'll also note for the record, and I think it was noted earlier that. Both boards have retained LeBerge engineers as the town designated review engineer. And the Ron LeBerge is assisting both boards on, not just the engineering technical, uh, compliance and, and. Review of the application, but will also be assisting the boards under seeker and making the seeker determination. Which in large part will, will include potential visual impacts. And, uh. On that score, I'd ask Mr. LeBerge if, uh, he has any thoughts on the procedure on, uh, the public hearing? And whether what's been submitted is in the nature of response to public comments by the applicant.
I agree with Andy in the sense that the way this. Relocation. It really is in direct response to the public comment. I, my own personal opinion of location. Is that location one provides probably the best screening of all the, uh. Options when compared to the totality of all the residential properties surrounding the parcel. It's going to be visible from different locations, but that kind of minimizes it, in my opinion, along with the tree height. But back to, uh, the, the public hearing, I, I don't see this as really a completely new application. By the shift in location. So. I hope that answers your question, Andy. And be happy to answer any questions from the boards.
Dave Brennan speaking for one second, just to interject. I'd also like to add that during the original balloon fly that was scheduled for the summer that was later pushed to the fall. We did notice the balloon fly and flew balloon at all three locations and all, each, in each case, that went to every resident within 750 feet of the outer, outside of the property boundary. And so at the public hearing, I did present extensively, not to, um. Location two, because that's a newer alternative, but certainly to location one, three, and then the 240 foot down the hill. And those, uh, those were, you know, I, I would say fairly vigorously discussed amongst the, with the public as to the three different locations. So, um, I certainly do agree that it's, it's no surprise that we're talking about multiple locations on this tower. It was certainly the, the subject of debate at the public hearing. Thank you.
Uh, th- this is Chairman Oster speaking. Just to add to that a little bit. We did have discussion when this first came out. We were talking, uh, basically standard. Cell towers. And we got involved with the mono pine. Design and so forth and so on. And what really, uh, kind of turned me towards that more was the fact that now you can extend. These branches down to make it look like a pine tree instead of like a Q-tip, I guess, is more or less, uh, the word. So, um. That really kind of switched my mind towards the 80 foot tower. I mean, certainly there are 80 foot white pines, uh, in, in the, uh, in the town of Brunswick. So I don't think this would be entirely out of character. Uh, and there are pine trees in that general location of, uh, position number one. So, uh, I would, I would like to hear if, uh, there is any other comments from my board on this or whether I'm, uh. Basically leading the comments or, uh, if somebody has something different to, to add to that. This is Chairman Oster. Again, uh, I, I guess, uh, everybody was in agreement with me on that. But, uh, certainly we would like to hear some comments from the, uh, zoning board members if they wish to comment.
Well, we're maybe waiting for the planning board members to, um, share some of their comments. I have a question. What came up in the public hearing was the, the values of the surrounding properties. And, uh, Mr. Brennan, I saw that you, um, distributed a report to that regard. And I appreciate that the values were local, um, from like the town of Miskiuna and so forth. Could you kindly expand about, on, on that report a little bit, please? And then after that, Mr. LeBerge, if you could kindly, um, uh, provide your comments on that.
Certainly Dave Brennan speaking, thank you. So that report was done and we, we had submitted one that was done for another project. And it was more based upon a, a review of sites in the central to western part of the state. And we were requested to provide additional, uh, newer data and more relevant to the, I'll call it the capital district. And so we commissioned the same company to prepare a report. And basically what they did is they went through and identified a number of, uh, existing tower locations. And the methodology is basically, um, taking a look at sale, sales that occur in a particular location. Then the addition of a telecommunications tower and then subsequent sales. And basically by, um. Addressing the, the time value of money and, and inflation in the housing market. They analyze on a, you know, current value dollar, whether the prices on those homes that are in the vicinity of a, a, a tower that's now been added to the community have been reduced. And, uh, what that report says is that, uh, there was no correlation to the addition of a tower and subsequent reductions in prices. And so it's hard, or in my mind, I don't know how you would, for a specific location like this, say, how you do a study on these particular homes. But what we've done is in the immediate area, found other locations where there were sales before and after a tower went in. And shown that there was no downward trend with the, uh, the subsequent sale prices.
We did review the report, although I did note in my comments to the board. Property valuation. Send a couple of notes. One comment I would have on the report is that it didn't necessarily define whether these were line of sight properties. Is one thing, or was the tower.
Excuse me, this is member Stan Cliff. Mr. LeBerge, you keep, um, going in and out in terms of volume. I'm not sure if it's a, something on your computer or.
Without using the spacebar. Does that sound a little better, Linda?
That's better, thank you.
Well, whatever I'm saying is that we're certainly not experts in real estate. We looked at the report. Find whether properties were line of sight. The tower was in the actual line of sight from particular property. And whether that had an effect on the value, which I think was more of the concern of, of the, of the, uh, the neighbors. But Andy, I will, um. Kind of pass this to you a little bit. I don't know whether you had anybody else look at that report or anybody in your office looked at that report.
Attorney Gilchrist here. As of right now, the boards have not had any independent, uh, real estate appraisal or property evaluation expert review the report. Certainly we, we reviewed it in our office, but. Not to say that we're only lawyers, but we're only lawyers and. Certainly the boards, if they're inclined, can, can have a qualified consultant review the report in a system in their review. We will note for the record though, that, um, the concern about impact of property values was raised. There was, uh, as Mr. Brennan stated, uh, at this point, two reports submitted, one more, we'll call it generically in New York and one, uh, more local. They are part of the record and they're certainly available for the board's, uh, review and consideration on that issue. It is within the board's, um, ability to, uh, retain an expert, to provide them, uh, counsel and guidance on the issue of impact to real property values. If you're so inclined. But we will note that the record, uh, does contain the two expert reports submitted by the applicant. Both concluding that there is no, uh, impact to real property values as a result of the installation of the tower.
Dave Brennan speaking. The other thing I would like to add on this topic, uh, that distinguishes this location from many others. And we submitted this in our, um, our June 8th, 2020 submission to both boards is. We submitted a series of photos that show that all of the homes, uh, or I would say 90% of the homes that can, can potentially see the top of now this stealth monopine tree. Have significant views of an existing national grid utility, high tension transmission line that goes right along. So every single home on San Cherry Lane to the, to the south is basically right in their backyards. I think they're 80 or 90 foot tall transmission towers as, as do all of the houses on Eagle Ridge, Eagle Ridge Drive. And so the idea that there would be a, a potential. Decrease in property values as a result of, particularly of a stealth monopine, when there's already a series of towers that make up, uh, the existing community character. If there's going to be an impact on, on property values, it's already in existence.
I have another question for Minister LeBerge. What came up in the public hearing was the merits of the application. Could you kindly speak to the completeness of the application?
Oh, Ron LeBerge, LeBerge Engineering. As far as the completeness of the application, uh, at this point, I would tell the application is complete except for, uh, you know, the final location. This was sort of going back several meetings now where we talked about really for, for the applicant to finalize an application. They're really going to need to know kind of the location, where to site the tower. But as far as, you know, their, their, um, you know, the radio frequency studies and things like that, those are complete. We reviewed those, we concur with those findings, um, which is a major part of these telecommunications applications. But there are a couple of issues that still need to be addressed. And I believe Mr. Brennan is aware of them. One is a noise study based on, uh, generator usage, which again, is going to be defined by location from buildings, terrain. And again, that goes to a very site specific type of study that would need to be required. So. In my opinion, for the, the application to be fully complete for any board to actually take, make an action or even, uh, even the secret determination. I mean, we would need that final set of plans. For the site. I mean, we, we, we know the basic footprint of what this is going to be. But we would need the details, you know, we, we haven't, we know it's going to be a, a stealth tree now or stealth tower, excuse me. But we need the detail on that. Now we need the detail on the site. We know the road's going to go up the side of the fields. So then it's just a matter of what are the final grades going to be at some point? You know, we'll have to look at the, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan. But those things again, are very, very site specific. So. I think that at this point, uh, and I think I addressed it in my, my, was it? June 15th letter, I'm not a hundred percent sure. That in essence, the application's complete, kind of except for those few items.
Dave Brennan speaking. Uh, I, I agree with the, the list of items that would be the same that I have is we, uh, had deferred submitting a, a noise study and a full SWIP and grading. Until one of the, one of the locations was, was selected on the idea that, um, you know, even if you move, you know, if you move a project 50 feet, end up redoing the SWIP. And so we were going to use standard, uh, erosion control measures and, and, uh, stormwater measures for many of the locations. But we would finalize that once we had a determination of if there was a preferred location. On the, on the generator, I would just also point out that the, the generators, there was one comment, uh, about the noise from the generator. The generators don't power the site. They're powered by standard underground, um, utility electric feeds. The, uh, the generators are there for backup power in case of an extended outage. They do, um, exercise. Once a week Verizon usually does Monday or Tuesday mornings, um, you know, after nine o'clock, they run for about 20 minutes and. Uh, come up to power, come up to a temperature, transfer the power over, do a full switch over and then shut back down. I will say we have one right outside of our office, um, that I've walked by and you could literally have this conversation standing next to it when it's idling. They're now so quiet. So, uh, I'm not expecting that the, you know, it's, is quieter, quieter than anyone has at any of these homes outside the Generac backup generator that anyone has.
This is Ron LeBerge again. Uh, just one other note too, as I was kind of looking back through the, the comments from the meeting. One of the major concerns was that the archaeological work had not yet been completed on this site, although listed to be a sensitive area. Uh, in discussion with, uh, their consultant and it outlined in my letter of June 15. This, this project requires a federal license, so it goes through a federal, uh, environmental review. Which requires a slightly different approach to the cultural resources investigation. And I believe this might've been discussed at the, a planning board level. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure anymore. But. Any secret determination is going to be predicated. On a, you know, successful completion or of, of a cultural resource survey. And should that survey show anything, say that there is something, you know, it will have to be mitigated. If it's, uh, we've had projects where we've actually had to do that. You know, you find something, you have to mitigate it. It's expensive. And we'd have, at that point, it would be up to the applicant to see if they want to amend their project, which of course are then coming back to the boards. Uh, or, or pay the cost to mitigate.
Dave Brennan speaking. I, I agree with Mr. LeBerge. So i- in the telecommunications world, there is a, uh, national programmatic agreement with the historic preservation's office, officers of each state. And, um, it basically, there is an online filing system, uh, that is in large part predicated upon a specific site. You submit that and they look at, uh, an area of, uh, potential effects in an area. I think it's a direct effects, but basically they look at whether there's any impact on historic structures or properties. And then also there's a component of, of, uh, of the archaeological aspect. In this case, at, at, we're talking about an 85 foot stealth monopine tree. My, my experience would tell me that I'd be surprised to see that the New York shipper office would be upset or find that that was going to have an adverse effect. Or significant effect, uh, on historic properties in the location we're talking. And then on the archaeological side. There is a study done and then usually there's shovel tests that have to be done once the actual locations are determined. In this case, um, the, the access road goes down the side of the, the, the farm field. I'm not quite sure how that plays in. I've heard, or probably heard and forgotten different things about whether that, because it's been, uh, farmed, whether that's disturbed or not. But basically there'll be shovel tests. And again, as Mr. LeBerge is discussing, if there are, um, you know, artifacts that are discovered, there is a process to, um, collect those, categorize them, write a report and submit them to the state museum for future use. So there's a way to mitigate any impact if we do come across that.
Thank you for the explanation, Chairperson Clemente. I have a question for both Attorney Gilchrist and Mr. LeBerge. What is procedure of a board to develop a content, a consensus for preferred location? How have you seen that done in the past and what would you recommend for this board?
Attorney Gilchrist first. That, that certainly does take all, all kinds of forms. Really what this boils down to is simply a discussion amongst the board members of how they feel about these various locations.
how they feel about these various locations. As I said earlier, not necessarily if one is quote unquote preferred, but rather more in the nature of certain locations having what could be perceived as significant detriment or significant impacts, such that that's not the location that should be considered. The planning board has generally taken that approach of getting various thoughts from, from board members about the various locations. So there's not a, if you will, set procedure. It's really just eliciting comments from your board members. Ron, do you have any thoughts on that procedure? Have you seen it done differently?
Ron LeBerge, I agree, it takes various forms. You know, with joint boards, this is a first for me, so I won't address that directly. But with my work with other planning boards, because it's usually at the planning board level, you're getting into these things more than the zoning board. You know, it is a matter of elimination. I kind of look at it as a concept plan, even though this is much more developed than a typical concept plan might be, where you're, you're looking at essentially proposals from the developer, in this case telecommunications company. And again, using a process of elimination and even suggestion, though sometimes, to kind of narrow down what is deemed reasonable by the board to progress. And they use that term concept purposely because, as Andy said, just because we say, let's say it's Area 1. Well, Area 1 means an area that we're not 100% sure exactly where it is. We know about where it is, but you'll get that later on. It's really this, this process many times, and again, the planning board's been through it, is used really to work for the developer as well, in this case telecommunications company, to, to kind of settle on what's the, in this case, we're looking at what's the least defensive location, I think, simply put. But there is no right or wrong methodology here, if that's the basic question.
This is Chairman Oster. I have a, I have a question for, for Dave. When you, when you choose a location, for example, say, we, we decide on, you know, our preferred location would be probably number one, what is the plus or minus on that location? Could it be conceivable to be 50 feet to one side, depending on, on what you have when you finally come over and, and really take a look at that, that site? There may be outcroppings or something like that, may move that pole around. Is there a general rule of thumb when we agree on a site, whether there's a, some lateral movement by the applicant?
Certainly. Dave Brennan speaking. So on location one that we're discussing, there is a yellow, a yellow triangle in, which is representing the, the location. There is actually a lease exhibit that has a defined 100 by 100 foot area that, that is on, on the lease and is something that's subject to, to mapping. And I'm just going to, trying to pull up the, the site plan. But basically, on the site plan for location three, the one where we had the, the site plan prepared, there is an actual set of, of coordinates given for the tower centroid. And in the wireless world, we, we usually use something, they, the surveying company will go out and do what they call 1A survey. And this has been a long time since I've looked at this, but the one, it deals with the precision of the survey. So one is within, I'll say a foot vertical, and A is within five feet horizontal or vice versa. But basically, it's, it becomes a very specific point, because when we have to register this with the FAA and provide those coordinates, so it goes on the, the mapping for, for airplane flights, they, they want to know right where the thing is and exactly how tall it is. And so it's, it's very precise. It's not plus or minus 50 feet. We do have, we've always provided the lease exhibit for location one and location three, which shows the exact 100 by 100. So it's within that location. Certainly, we have, in particular, on location one, we have a little bit of latitude within that. But basically, we do try to put it within the, generally within the middle of the lease area unless there is some corresponding design limitations like, like grading that we would deal with if they needed to, to grade. But it, it's not a lot of movement on those.
This is Chairman Oster. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Attorney Gilchrist here. Again, if I could just note for the record that there was a discussion earlier about when the boards identify a site, we'll, we'll just confirm again that this discussion is on identifying a location where the applicant can then move forward, complete the requirements for filling out the application fully, what we talked about earlier, the noise assessment, stormwater analysis. This is again, not to predetermine any action or approval on a specific location, but rather to identify a location to then fully apply your review standards, once the application is complete. Understand from the applicant's perspective, too, and Mr. LeBerge said earlier, many times you work with the applicant, the applicant does need to identify a site to do those specific studies to complete the application, acknowledging that the boards still need to complete their final determination, applying their standards. And then in this case, the planning board will need to do their secret determination. So I just wanted to note for the record that this is not a predetermination of approval of any particular variance or special use permit or site plan, but rather a location that's, of the opinion of the boards, should have additional information submitted so that they can complete their determination of the application.
This is Chairman Oster. Would a, like a informal poll, is that what's something that we're looking for here to establish at this meeting?
Attorney Gilchrist, no, it's not. And I would suggest that neither chair, you know, polled their members at this point. This is really to elicit some, some comments from board members. Unfortunately, some of the board members have been silent, but that's their prerogative. And if the chair are accurately stating their opinions, well, then the, the record will be so noted. But this is to provide some direction for the, the applicant then to move forward. You should not be at this point polling the board or asking for any particular yea or nay on that, just to elicit comment on these alternate locations.
This is member Tarbox. Dave, can you say how much grading you're going to need at Site 1 and Site 2? And there's no use of putting a tower up if they're not going to work. So these towers will work when you put them up? They will solve the problem that you have with your coverage?
Dave Brennan speaking. So in response to that, my answer is yes, the, the tower will work and solve the problem when it's up, because we couldn't agree more. There's no, no use in putting a tower up that doesn't work. And that would be, that would, would be more than disappointing for, for all of us to go through this and not solve a problem. So we're comfortable through our RF analysis that the, that the tower will work. On the, the grading, I don't have grading on, on Site 1 at my fingertips, unfortunately. I can provide that information. As I recall, discussing with the engineer, the location 2, the more southerly location for a shorter tower, the 90 foot, had more terrain issues and possibly a little bit of a, of a, not a wet area like a wetlands, but maybe there was drainage flow coming off the top of the hill through it. So as between the two locations, Location 1 was going to have less grading and less issues with construction.
This is member Stancliff from the planning board. I had a question regarding photo simulations, P20. You show option 1, the red, sorry, that's the orange balloon, option 1 at P20, was option 2 not visible from that location?
Dave Brennan speaking. I'm sorry, member Stancliff, could you just re- repeat the, oh, I heard the question. So the, the, this was when we flew the, the second balloon at location, it would be 2, the 90 foot, the red balloon, we didn't go back into the backyards. We flew them and ran the, the visual resource evaluation from the street. And so this photo was taken in the fall with the original three balloons at 80 feet, 150 and 240 off the screen.
So do we know from the backyard if option 2 is visible from this location?
We don't know from, from this information. I can talk to our, our engineer and see if we can evaluate that. My sense is it, it is, it certainly was visible from Eagle Ridge Drive, from the, from the backs of the home. So I would expect that it would be visible from this location as well, but I'll, I'll get an answer to that question.
And I would ask the same for P21, which was, I believe, the backyard part of Coal Hammer, 44 Coal Hammer Ave.
Dave Brennan speaking. Okay, I understand the question. I'll get a response for that.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. LeBerge in regards to Mr. Tarbox's question. Mr. LeBerge, the RF analysis, did you find it complete and satisfactory to your standards and your review?
We did. And the original RF analysis, you'll remember, the boards also requested some additional information on that. And the applicant did a basically drive-through type analysis where they go through the site and picked up what information they can from the existing towers. Kind of verify that, you know, holes in their system are shown in their propagation study. You know, I can let Mr. Brennan speak to that in more detail, but between those two studies, it very much identified the problem that exists. And the location, and this location, you know, basically fills that hole for their carrier.
Dave Brennan speaking. I don't want to get too far into this, but we, we do believe we've shown both through RF plots and drive test data that there is a significant gap in coverage and that a facility or one of these facilities will serve to remedy that, that gap in coverage. And certainly, Mr. LeBerge and, and at least one location, if not more, has identified that, that he was, he agreed with that. And again, it goes back to Mr. Tarbox's question, which is, we'd have a bad business model if we were building sites that were either unnecessary or, or didn't remedy the problem. And so we're comfortable that we both have a problem, and it justifies the, the significant expense and of deploying a new site to fix it.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. I, I guess at this time, I'll, I'll ask one more time whether anyone wishes to make any comments from my board in order to, you know, maybe get some direction here.
This is Chair Person Clemente. Maybe while we're waiting for that, I can ask another question to the applicant. So the zoning board, this is the largest structure that the zoning board has dealt with so far in, in my time, and I believe some of the other members' time on the zoning board as members. So dealing with shorter structures to mitigate the visual impact, a condition or a request has been to provide visual barriers, most likely in the form of live trees, though I'm sure a fence could do that as well. So with this height, would it be possible to provide a visual barrier for the surrounding properties to mitigate that, that visual impact? What, what have you seen?
Dave Brennan speaking. So I guess there's two parts to my answer. One is that when we've transitioned from a standard monopole tower to a stealth structure that's, that's in a, in a tree line, we believe that the majority of the impact is thereby mitigated. And then the other aspect of this is there, there is the ability to, in certain locations, plant trees. We have typically done that around base station equipment where it's low. Obviously, you can't, you can't plant a six or an eight foot, some sort of evergreen tree at the base of this and get anything out of it. So what we have done in certain cases from specific locations is provided a, an amount of money to a property owner to purchase trees and install trees on their, on the property line, if there was a specific view that we wanted to try to mitigate. And probably the, the best two examples, the, the, I'm going to go back one slide, the, the O'Brien residence, which is, this is up on the top of San Cherry Hill Lane. While there's a good view of this tower, if you were to look at this from an aerial view, they have screening all along their backyard, except for, you know, essentially this width, which is standing on the property line where they've, they've taken down or has something, I want to say they did it, but there's no trees in this particular location. Looks like they've opened it up, so they have a nice view going out. You could put, in theory, trees across this location in here and stagger them to mitigate the view across. And that's something we would certainly consider if that was between the stealth monopine and some discreet trees. We don't want to install them ourselves or, or have Dave Brennan go and water them, but we would certainly, what we've done in the past is provided an amount of money so a property owner could install trees on the property line to provide some additional buffer.
Chair Person Clemente, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Brennan.
Dave Brennan, you're welcome.
So Mr. Oster, I, I believe if you want to continue to go forward, I think procedurally, you would vote, you and your members would vote to end the special meeting, and then you'd meet again at your regular meeting, and then the zoning board would continue with new business. I think, I think that's where, where we are, if we're no longer having a discussion.
Sure. It's just Dave Brennan speaking for, for one second before you take a vote and enclose. So the, the one thing that's, that's in the background is the, these concurrent applications have been pending since, I'll say, June of 2019, and we've regularly renewed the, the shot clock through Mr. Gilchrist's office to extend the time to review it. But I certainly, when I go back and report to my client, there's going to be a, a question about was, when do we get to the, to the final act of, of the review? You know, certainly I can appreciate Mr. Gilchrist not wanting the board, and I don't know if I agree that it's prejudging it because the application is before you, but to provide some, some insight to us that, you know, if none of these three alternatives are considered viable to the board members, I don't think it's an unfair thing for you to tell us that, rather than us to want to have to, have to go through and prepare a full SWIP and spend, Mr. LeBerge. Mr. LaBerge could opine better than I, but I've heard of the number of ten thousand dollars or more, but it's not insignificant money in engineering of a site. If we were to come back and find out that, sorry, Dave, none of these work for us. You know, we need to get to a point where 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 someone is agreeable to to a vote. And then, you know, probably related to that is the the standard by which the application has to be judged, particularly at the zoning board level. It's not your traditional standard for a a use variance or an area variance it deals with. It's the public necessity standard or reduced showing that, you know, that that we've basically in three parts, we've identified gaps in service that the location will remedy those gaps, and then the facility presents a minimal intrusion on the community. And so from my perspective, I think we meet those all day long. We certainly have identified a gap showing that we're remedying the gap. And with the facility in its present intended location as a stealth monopine, then it's a minimal intrusion on the community, particularly against the backdrop of an existing high tension corridor that goes right next to all of these homes. And so I think, you know, I it's it's late in the night. You've had a had a long night already, and I don't want to belabor it, but we're we are somewhat desperately looking for some direction, and then we will certainly if do whatever we need to finalize the application. But I can tell you from the noise study perspective, I've yet to see one that comes back and says that we're going to cause a noise problem. And so I'm not worried about, you know, the grading plan is engineering and with all deference to to Mr. LaBerge. The SWIP is simple engineering. It's not as if we can't solve any of those problems. The the thing I can't solve is is location in in visibility and whether or not the, you know, it all comes down to visibility in the in the board's sensibilities of whether you're going to agree or disagree that this is a minimal intrusion.
Chairperson Clemente, thank you for that summarization of those three standards.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. I think based on our previous meetings of the planning board and so forth and so on, there there is a consensus, a general consensus that we would like to see possibly the moving forward with the eighty foot tower. I haven't heard anything contrary to that tonight from my board members. We are going to be discussing this at our meeting on Thursday, the twentieth. You're on our agenda. And after I talked to Attorney Gilchrist on this and how we're going to move forward on this, I would say that the planning board unofficially, if you want to call it that, would lean towards the eighty foot site at this point.
Dave Brennan speaking. I appreciate that. And certainly, I'm not trying to put anyone in. If I'm making you uncomfortable, I'm I'm certainly not trying to, and I don't think I am because of the folks I know on these various boards. I don't think that's it. So I I think, you know, with that, from my perspective, you know, we're we are on the agenda for the planning board on Thursday, and it will be another opportunity to 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 continue the conversation, which I appreciate. And we certainly would request that we're carried on the the zoning board agenda. I don't have that date right in front of me, but I will look it up for your third Monday in September, and we will we'll circle back with the zoning board at that point.
The twenty first, Mr. Brennan, Chairperson Clemente. Look forward to seeing you then.
This is Chairman Oster. Unless Andy has some input on this, I think I'm going to follow Ann's lead here and probably conclude the planning board special meeting, if that's appropriate at this time.
Attorney Gilchrist here. Russ, I believe it is. And you're correct. The procedure would be to close your special meeting, and the zoning board will continue with its regular meeting.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Do I have a motion to adjourn our special meeting? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Member Stan Cliff, I'll second that motion.
And we have to do a roll call vote on that, Andy, I would assume?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist, on the motion to adjourn the planning board special meeting, roll call vote as follows. Chairman Oster?
Yay.
Member Krieger?
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello?
Member Manello, aye.
Well, note, Members Peterson and Henderson are absent. Member Stan Cliff?
Member Stan Cliff, aye.
And Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
Motion is carried, and the planning board's special meeting is closed.
Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster. Thank you for including us in your meeting, Ann. And we will proceed ahead with our business on on the twentieth. Just as a side note, that would be an open meeting. That is not going to be a Zoom meeting. So any of the members of the planning board that are on here, I would suggest that they get come to the meeting a little bit early because there is some procedures that we probably have to go through to to get into our meeting. So with that, thanks again, Ann, and we'll be talking later.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Ross. Thanks for joining us. A pleasure having you tonight. Have a good night.
This is Chuck, a question for Attorney Gilchrist. The two members not present with the planning board were Peterson and the second gentleman was who? Was a member Henderson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll continue the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting into new business. We have four applications. Eleven Riccardi Lane, I believe. Second is thirty Killlock Avenue, third forty two Hummiston Avenue, and then lastly, seven eighteen Huzick Road. Look at eleven Riccardi Lane. Applicant is seeking two area variances. Travis Wagner, are you in attendance here tonight with us?
I am.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Wagner, could you could you kindly give us a brief overview of the project?
Yep, I am constructing a accessory building. It will be a garage to store some cars and a boat that I have. It will be a, it's an all metal construction building. And it will have a Alaskan slab flooring.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner, I'm going to ask you, because it's part of the elements that the zoning board deliberates on, are there any other areas on the property where you could have met that front bet, that front setback?
Unfortunately, that's the main issue. On the other one that I provided there, that's the tax map that shows the elevation change, it's like a sixty foot drop off directly behind. It's very sharp and steep. I can't, I it's as far as I could physically push it back.
You're also requesting a size variance on the structure. Were you proposed two thousand two hundred and fifty where fifteen hundred is required?
Yep, the main enclosed structure is fifteen hundred, but I included a a lean to overhang off the side to put I have a enclosed snowmobile trailer and an RV. I'd like to park undercover, but that goes with the square footage, so that's why it's kind of bigger than it needs to be.
Okay. And Mr. Wagner, do you give permission to the zoning board members to visit the site?
Yes, I do.
I'll ask if any other zoning board members have any questions for Mr. Wagner at this time. Otherwise, I would deem the applications complete and ready for a public hearing at our September twenty first meeting. So I'll I'll open up to the zoning board members at this time.
This is Member Sherret. I have no questions.
This is Member Curran. I have no questions.
Member Schmidt, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, well, thank you for that feedback. So, Mr. Wagner, we'll hold a public hearing. I'm not sure if you were on for the beginning of this meeting way back at six o'clock, but well, the neighbors surrounding the project site within three hundred feet will be notified of this project. They'll have the opportunity to come to the zoning board meeting in September on the twenty first at six o'clock to voice their approval or disapproval. If they have any questions at that time, they're also permitted to submit written a letter for or against the application. And then the zoning board members will deliberate on on the application and hopefully be able to render a decision on that night. Have any questions for us right now?
I do not.
Okay, very good. If you do, if anything comes up, you can contact Chuck Golden at the Building Department to help you through it. Otherwise, thank you very much, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, and thank the board for your time.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Attorney Gilchrist here. So that will be placed in the September twenty one agenda. The application was deemed complete, and it will be scheduled for a public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we had the renoticed public hearing from earlier. Will this one be at six fifteen PM?
It is. I believe I mistakenly told this applicant it was at six, but it would make sense that he would that that the eleven Riccardi would be at six fifteen after the renoticing of the Bauer application.
Okay, it'll be noticed for six fifteen PM.
Member Chairman Clemente, thank you, Mr. Gilchrist, for asking for that clarification. Moving on to our second item of new business is thirty Killlock Avenue, proposing a twelve by twenty four accessory structure. For one area variance, it's a front setback where required is sixty feet, being proposed is eight. Mr. Adam Kunrad, are you with us tonight? Is there a representative of thirty Killlock Avenue who could speak on behalf of this application tonight? If not, I'll turn it over to Chuck Golden at the Building Department. Can you kind of summarize?
I can certainly try to raise the individual. I have been over at this site. Is it is very tight, as you can see by the front property line going just about through the front of the house or across the front porch. There is a one foot setback for the home. And the gentleman has a, we'll call it peculiar parcel in that there is a tail off the back of it, which accesses Goodman. And the with the pool location and the other garage type structure to the left, they are looking at putting it on the right side. Underneath that tree, the woman homeschools three children. So a lot of the classroom activity is underneath that tree that they have during the day where they're outside, and they really didn't want to push it back that far. They just considered this to be the best location. I will try to find Mr. Kunrad and and try to raise him. I I told him he should plug in at three or seven o'clock, so I'm not quite sure where he is.
That's all right. It certainly passed seven o'clock, so I I understand that perhaps if they have small children in the house, we are an hour and a half past what we asked them to be at. So I'm sure it was probably inconvenient. But so just confirm, Mr. Golden, so the proposed site would be behind the area where the children currently do their homeschooling? Is that correct?
Actually, in front of. The the grade section just to the right of the house is shown on your screen right now shows where that shed is going to be located.
Okay, some hash mark?
Yes, exactly. Mine is a little more the the outline of it and the dimensions on the sheet in which I gave the members. That shows it with a little more clarity, but.
This is Pat Polito. Sorry to butt in. Sarah Kunrad just signed in.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Okay, good.
Hi, wel- welcome. Welcome, Sarah Kunrad.
Your microphone isn't working. It says in the chat down below. This is Member Sherret. Can you hear me? We can now. Okay.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for us tonight.
No problem. Sorry, our iPad wasn't working.
Just didn't kick in for some reason, so.
Challenging circumstances, we totally understand. Could you come?
Thank you.
Brief overview of the project?
Yeah, we're looking to get a shed to to facilitate some extra storage room for our yard. My wife homeschools, so we have a lot of like yard toys, and and we care how our home looks and whatnot, and we really just want to make our be able to take care of our products and our stuff and be able to kind of work with the neighborhood. Our neighborhood is really nice, and we want to kind of get this ball rolling, and you guys are the first step. So we figured we'd contact you, and Chuck has been really incredibly helpful, and here we are.
Yes, yeah, we have a really A-plus building department here at Brunswick.
Certainly.
So the application appears complete for the purpose of holding a public hearing, and that will take place at our next meeting, which is September twenty first. And that would approximately happen around six thirty.
Okay.
Do you have any, I'm not sure if you were on earlier to hear some previous public hearings. Do you have any questions about that procedure at this time?
Um, no, I think we tuned in around seven fifteen, got to hear most of the cell phone tower thing. We've been to some meetings at the town in the past, so we kind of have a gist of, you know, what's what. Do you guys have any questions for us? Is there anything else we can do to assist?
I don't think at this time, but at the public hearing, the zoning board members will have an opportunity to ask you questions as well as the public.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Our third item of new business is forty two Humstead Avenue. Might sound familiar. This is one variance that's being requested. It's a building height. So like that, this application has, well, this applicant has been before the zoning board this past summer. And the zoning board approved a variance for a height of twenty three point five feet. The applicant applicant is coming back to see they can increase that to twenty nine point five. Is the applicant with us tonight?
Yes, this is Denise Breen, forty two Hummiston.
Welcome, Denise. Thank you for joining us tonight. Could you kindly just give us a brief overview of your project?
Yes, we're we're looking to add six feet to the the previous plan to facilitate being able to restore a camping trailer, which, after some discussion and some assessment of the project, we realized the the previous height wouldn't allow us a chance to work work on top of it. So requesting this extra six feet will allow us to do that.
Thanks, Denise. If I understand correctly, was there a, is this a two-story building?
Yes, there there is a locked space. Do you want?
Yes, it says one four five two Hummiston Ave. Yes, there is a locked space for storage.
Okay, all right. Great. Well, thank you for that. Your application appears complete for the purposes of holding a public hearing. You guys are all pros at this. The next date is September twenty first, and I believe we're up to six forty five PM.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you then. Have a good night.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. And our fourth and final new business application is at seven twenty Huzick Road. And our fourth and final new business application is at 720 Husick Road. It's an existing Taco Bell. We're looking for an area variance for signage request. Representative from Bowler Engineering be with us tonight?
Good evening, Chair Clemente. This is Tim Freitag with Bowler Engineering. We also have Mike McCracken with Hospitality Syracuse Inc. as applicant.
Thank you for joining us both. Could you kindly provide a brief overview of your project for the zoning board members?
Absolutely, my pleasure. So, Tim Freitag, good evening, everyone. We appreciate your time this evening. I'm sure everybody's tired, but appreciate you sticking around for us. We're here to introduce our request for a freestanding sign variance at the existing Taco Bell facility at 718 Husick Road. Our site is part of the 16-acre PDD property for the Brunswick Plaza. It's along the heavily commercialized corridor of Husick Road. The applicant's in pursuit of three signage area variances, all really triggered by the request for the freestanding sign. Since we're part of the PDD and the plaza property, our application for a second freestanding sign on the site is not allowed by code since there is an existing plaza center sign on the 16-acre property outside of the leasehold property for Taco Bell. In addition to the freestanding sign request, we also need relief for the total area of proposed signage. Existing on-site is 114 square feet. This freestanding sign or monument sign is 32 square feet in size. That pushes up to 146 square feet, including one sign, or 178 square feet, including both sides of that freestanding sign. This 178 square foot also includes the existing monument board and drive-through signage, or the existing menu board and drive-through signage. We'll also need relief for the total number of proposed signs on the leasehold property. Seven exist today. That includes five wall signs, directional sign, and menu board sign. It was previously indicated that the five wall signs, each wall sign was separate between the Taco Bell emblem and the Taco Bell text. So, the three sides of the existing building have wall signage, but there's five signs total. This request goes from seven existing to proposed eight signs on-site. Little history of the project. Back in 2018, 2019, Taco Bell and Sunmark were before the town for site plan review and associated area variances for the development of these two projects. Projects had successful openings in 2019. At that time, the applicant did apply for a similar freestanding sign. The ZBA conducted a diligent review of this sign, and after two meetings and many back-and-forth efforts, the applicant did withdraw their application as the board felt the signage was a little excessive and did not have much purpose at that time. The applicant was challenged to see if they could survive without this freestanding sign and the need for the variant. As part of our application, you'll find a letter from Mr. McCracken himself indicating the restaurant is facing financial hardship. The restaurant is underperforming. A certain surprise to this heavily commercialized corridor of Husick Road with similar uses. Access to our site is difficult due to the busy multi-lane corridor of Husick Road and the need to access the site from the existing signalized intersection to the plaza. We don't have our own separate curb cut. And visibility for patrons prior to this intersection is crucial for the success of our restaurant. For these types of uses, quick-serve restaurant uses with drive-throughs, 40% of business is provided by pass-by traffic. People see the restaurant and stop in for food. If you miss the opportunity or drive-by, people don't tend to like to turn around. We lose a customer, and there's lots of competitors further down Husick Road that provide similar opportunities. If you drive by the site, you'll see that we're challenged from visibility a little bit from the east side. It's very limited, we have a very limited Taco Bell script text halfway on the side of the east side of our building, located over the door. It's very small, and it's pushed back from the road in the middle of the building. Tough to see for westbound traffic. From the west side, the building's actually further blocked from the neighboring building. We've got Pioneer Bank to the west of us. They're setback about 40 feet from the road, where Taco Bell is setback about 80 feet. Again, challenging from a visibility perspective for pass buyers. We believe signage up closer to the street will substantially help increase visibility to the store and allow patrons adequate time to decide to enter our site and maneuver to the appropriate turning lanes to enter our site safely. Our sign is proposed to meet the 15-foot required front yard setback. We're proposing a monument-type sign, which is in harmony with Pioneer Bank sign and Sunmark sign next door to us. It's proposed at nine feet tall, when 30 feet is allowed by code, and at a minor 32 square foot per side. The Taco Bell leased area, you know, is large enough to support the restaurant use in its entirety, and the freestanding sign would actually not be required if we were subdivided to our own parcel. We're within the overall shopping center parcel of the 16-acre site. Total signage area and number of signs would obviously still need relief for our proposed request, but much of that is driven by the menu board and directional signage as well. There's the existing freestanding sign on the overall 16-acre parcel. That is the shared plaza sign. We don't have access to a spot on that shared plaza sign. It's also outside of the leasehold site area where Taco Bell. And I'll just point out that our neighbor Sunmark, as part of their project in 2019, did get their own monument sign since they sit on their own parcel next door to us. We hope the board will sincerely consider our application. Certainly, please let us know if you have any questions or what further information you may find helpful to consider our application. Here, we're hopeful to prevent a downturnal of an underperforming store in the town of Brunswick to keep our doors open, keep employees employed, and continue to maintain a nice, clean new site. So, thank you, and Chair Clemente, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. And if we, in reviewing your application, if we did have any questions, we would bring it to Mr. Chuck Golden at the building department, who would then contact you. So, thank you for making yourself available to our questions. Other than that, it looks.
I, excuse me, Chairman, I just have a few questions for Tim. Were your, did your calculations include all of the signage you currently have on all the glass in the dining area? Every glass window has some sort of signage on it. Did your numbers include that?
No, sir. It just included the wall signage, the menu board signage, and the directional signage.
So, you will be removing those off the windows?
If that's what's required.
My next question is regarding the menu boards. A menu board usually goes up in the summertime that includes just drinks. That was not included in the original one. Did you calculate that into your numbers?
No, sir, we did not. I can certainly speak with the applicant.
And just my last thing, in speaking with other business owners along this corridor, what drivers are looking at are the bumpers of the cars in front of them. They are not looking at signage. They're looking not to rear-end somebody in the bumper-to-bumper traffic. That's just, I just wanted to throw that out there. And that's all I have, Chairperson.
Thank you. Thank you for those final notes.
Chairperson Clemente, Attorney Gilchrist here. I do have a question for Mr. Golden. In the application that was filed, is there any authorization by the underlying property owner? Or is the application simply on behalf of the tenant?
It was put in simply on behalf of the tenant.
And is there any letter of authorization from the property owner in the file?
That is a good question, Attorney Gilchrist. I'll have to look at that.
This is Tim Freitag. The owner did sign the application.
Okay.
Mr. Polito, if you can just, if that's online, can you scroll through that?
I don't seem to have the application. No, well, it's 1, 2, 3, 4. It should be the fifth or the fourth one down, number seven, the actual sign variance.
Yeah, I think it's right. Next one down. The fourth number seven item, there you go.
Okay. You're correct, Mr. Freitag.
Scrolling down. Okay, so the property owner, it does look like they executed the application, so that's complete, Chairperson Clemente.
Thank you for making note of that. Chairperson Clemente to Attorney Gilchrist. Are there any other questions or concerns for this applicant at this time?
Member Schmidt, I have a question for Attorney Gilchrist.
Sure.
One of their main reasons for wanting this is that the store is underperforming, and they gave a letter stating that. Do we need more information than just somebody's word that they're underperforming before we can use that information?
Attorney Gilchrist here. Member Schmidt, it's going to be the burden of the applicant to submit ample evidence so that the board can make a decision on whether to grant the variance. If you think there's not been adequate information, and the letter is not sufficient, you have every right to say we need additional information. It's up to the applicant to supply that. It could be supplied either in writing. It could be supplied verbally by the applicant on the record at your public hearing, but you have every right to ask for additional information on the application. A letter alone can raise some questions. It's simply a letter. It's not testimony. It's not any kind of economic evidence in front of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing, this is Chairperson Clemente. Thank you for bringing up that point, Member Schmidt. It is interesting. How would the applicant demonstrate that the sign would improve business? Right, so, we would look to this for the agenda for our next meeting on September 21st. We're at 7 o'clock already. So, 720 Husick Road on the agenda for our next meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Chairperson Clemente, that, the actual address is 718. That has been a problem. That 722 is actually the credit union, or the, and 718 is actually the Taco Bell.
Okay, right, straight that, so I did. I did say 720, so 718. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
So then, if that wraps that up, if there's any other business from the zoning board members? If not, then the chair makes a motion to adjourn to end the meeting? Would a member, so I'll take a breath. Anybody have any other issues of business to discuss? Okay, then the chair makes a motion to adjourn to end the meeting. Would a member second?
This is Member Curran, I second.
Thank you, Member Curran. Roll call vote. Member Schmidt?
Member Schmidt, aye.
Aye. Member Curran?
Member Curran, aye.
Thank you. Member Sherret?
Member Sherret, aye.
Thank you. Member Manillo?
Member Manillo, aye.
Thank you. Chair Clemente, aye. That concludes our meeting. Thank you, Pat, for acting as our esteemed moderator. Good night to everyone. See you next month.
Good night, all.
Good night.
In person.